Please rise.
Councilmember Erby, here. Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Here.
Councilmember O'Mara.
Here.
Councilmember Dolan.
Here.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Here.
Councilmember Harder. Mr. Chair, we have a forum.
With approval, adjourn the meeting November 22nd, 2016.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say motion carries. Journal is approved.
With approval of the adjourned special meeting on November 15th, 2016.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say it. Journal is approved. At this time, I make a motion to suspend the rules in order for presentation of a proclamation by the county executive to St. Louis Art Works, who represented with the 2016 National Arts and Humanities Youth Program Award. The program, the award is the nation's highest honor for after-school and out-of-school creative youth development programs. Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say motion carries. Rules are suspended. Please recognize Councilman Harder. County Executive?
All right, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Hello, everyone. Whereas St. Louis Art Works, a local arts program that provides life and job skills for underserved youth, received the 2016 National Arts and Humanities Youth Program Award. And whereas the National Arts and Humanities Youth Program Award is the nation's highest honor for after-school and out-of-school creative youth development programs, and awardees are recognized for their effectiveness in improving graduation rates, academic development, college enrollment rates, literacy and language abilities, communication and performance skills, and cultural awareness. And whereas St. Louis Art Works is one of only 12 organizations in the country to receive the honor this year. And whereas the St. Louis County Children's Services Fund is proud to support St. Louis Art Works Youth Employment Program that provides teens ages 14 to 19 the opportunity to develop the skills, confidence, and self-esteem needed for success. And whereas the St. Louis County Children's Services Fund is the largest children's services fund in the state of Missouri and provides behavioral health and substance abuse services for county residents zero to 19 years of age. Now therefore, I, Stephen V. Stanger, St. Louis County Executive, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, November 29th, 2016 as St. Louis Art Works Day.
At this time, we have Executive Director Priscilla Block and Program Director Andrea Purnell.
Hi.
Hi.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much for this honor. Get all of you guys to get together.
Yeah, if you guys want to come on the other side too, and kind of go on the other side of him.
What works? Shoulders to shoulders, thank you.
Yeah.
St. Louis Art Works Day, wow. Great. We are honored to receive this. We have been through the most exciting week in the history of St. Louis Art Works by being able to go to the White House and receive this award from Michelle Obama two weeks ago. We brought one of our apprentices and her mother with us, as well as Andrea, and represented the organization, which has been around for 21 years. And this is obviously the pinnacle. We're recognized as one of the best in the nation.
That's great.
Congratulations. Okay, move to bid openings. We have no bid openings. Move to communications.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises this evening, so move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, 6th district.
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation and same motion for item number two.
So ordered.
Item number three, 6th district.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Moving on to road and bridge matters, Mr. Chair. We have nothing under that this evening, so move to other communications. Under other communications, item number one, 6th district.
Receive file and refer to the Department of Transportation and Public Works, Department of Planning, and the county council.
So ordered.
Item number two.
Chief of County Counsel be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, same motion to item number six, and that will be the order.
Item number seven, 6th district.
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number eight, 3rd district.
Same motion.
So ordered.
Or, excuse me. No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
That's fine.
So ordered.
Item number nine, 3rd district.
Same motion.
So ordered.
Item number 10.
Same motion, that will be the order.
Item number 11, 2nd district.
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. We have no add-ons?
Yes, sir.
County Executive?
Nothing further to report.
All right, nice report. Thank you. No special committee's report. Move to public forum.
We have 10 speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
Please keep your comments to three minutes, and please state your name and address. First speaker.
First speaker this evening is Tom Sullivan.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few things to mention this evening. Last week, I noted the shootout at the Wells and Metrolink Station. Instead of points out how dangerous it can be to ride Metrolink in a public transit system, a security guard was shot, and then a shooter was shot three times by county police. About 30 shots were fired overall. That night, the night of the meeting, there was a robbery and a shooting at the Metrolink Station by the casino queen. The victim was left with a bullet in his spine. Just last night, there was another shooting at a Metrolink Station in Swansea. A man was shot in the face. Two were arrested, but no charges filed. Just what is going on with Metrolink's security and with the overall transit system should be a concern to this council, but it never is. Also, the top-to-bottom forensic audit promised by County Executive Steve Stinger that was to be completed in the first 100 days he was in office still isn't done, or at least it hasn't been released. Final report was to be completed by November 20th. I will again be filing complaints against the county executive for violations of the State Sunshine Law. Last year, after Mr. Stinger violated the law several times, Attorney General's office gave him a warning and reminded him he needed to follow the law. He was even given five copies of guides to the Sunshine Law.
That's false.
But apparently, it didn't do much good.
That's actually false. That's not what happened.
That's what she told me.
That's not what happened. That's not what happened.
You didn't get the guides?
Well, how about the first part of what you said? Because that was false.
Well, I got a copy.
Everybody gets the guides.
At any rate.
Keep going.
Also, I made a recent Sunshine request for copies of the county executive's emails and those of different ages related to the sales tax hike. He has obviously been doing a lot of behind-the-scenes campaigning for the tax, but I'm told there's so many emails it would cost $100 and take two weeks to gather them all. In addition, the county executive's office has been violating the Campaign Finance Disclosure Law in regard to the proposed sales tax. I expect it will be violated even more as the campaign progresses. Last of all, the legislation for the sales tax hike has problems. Had it been given a closer look, it would have become obvious. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Tom.
Next speaker is Chris Pulliam.
Good evening. My name is Chris Pulliam. I live at 2649 Cecilia Avenue in Brentwood, Missouri. I have a few comments on the proposed legislation to transfer the Museum of Transportation collections and all operation and maintenance tasks to the Not-for-Profit Transportation Museum Association. I don't normally put myself into situations like this, but because of how this situation has been mishandled, I feel compelled to speak today. This is an issue that affects at least three county resources: parkland, physical assets, and staff. You've addressed the land and the assets in this legislation, but you've paid very little attention to the staff that will be affected by this action. The fact that you didn't inform the Museum of Transportation staff, the fact that you didn't, that the Museum of Transportation staff were not informed of this proposed legislation and their loss of a job until the day of the first council reading of this proposal speaks volumes for county senior leaders' inability to effectively manage people. On the surface, this action appears like you're trying to pull a fast one on the public of St. Louis County. While it may not seem that way to you, from a public perspective, this piece of legislation has been crafted with little or no public or external comment or review. In this age of government transparency, this proposed action falls embarrassingly short of being transparent. What this really comes down to is who is the most appropriate organization to be the stewards for these one-of-a-kind public transportation artifacts? A not-for-profit organization that could dissolve after the five-year transitional period? Or a county government with civil servants whose sole purpose and mission is the care and long-term well-being of each and every artifact and archive and record in the collection? I also ask that you thoroughly research the following question, getting input from as many people as possible before you vote on this proposal. Is this action truly in the best interest of the county taxpayer when, by your own admission, you've spent $25 million of taxpayers' money on this park over the last 30 years, and you have physical public assets with a value in excess of $20 million? Finally, it is my belief that if you had a more balanced, thoughtful management agreement between the county and the TMA, one where the focus of the six-member management team is on what's best for the parkland, the artifacts, and the staff, the Museum of Transportation would be a sustainable venture for both parties. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Pulliam, just so you know, we addressed it last week that we will not be voting on this particular bill until we have our public hearing next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, thank you.
Which is a committee to hold meeting. No problem. I'm just letting you know it'd be at 4:30, I believe, Colleen?
I think so, yes, 4:30.
Yeah, 4:30 here in the chambers.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Chris.
Next speaker is Queen P. Doherty.
Good afternoon. This is my third time out here about the same situation, about the disciplinary judges, circuit judges, whatever. They've been wrongfully throwing their weights around because they're judges out here, and they're not treating us fairly. And I went to, I did what y'all asked me to do, go to the chief of the disciplinary council, whatever. They're not doing anything. Nobody's not doing anything. I mean, we're taxpayers. What do we fall in, I mean, how do we get treated fairly out here in this, I heard in the system? When we abide by the laws, these judges are breaking the laws, these lawyers are breaking the laws, and these big old mortgage companies, big and old mortgage companies are breaking the laws. We're the middle-class people. We're not getting a fair shakeout here. So where do we stand at? I mean, I asked you all, I mean, we did everything you all asked us to do, and nobody's not doing anything good. This judge is still on the bench. He's an alcoholic. He shouldn't be, he shouldn't be residing in anybody's case. So I want to see something done with this judge. I want to see him removed, this board, whatever you got to do to him. I want to see something happen to him.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Lisa Smith.
Hello. I want to talk to Ms. Erby. Last time I was here, I told you my issues with Riverview Gardens School District. You informed me, you did contact them, and they told you something about a legal brief. I informed you I didn't have a legal matter with them. And I guess I contacted your office, and your assistant said it was no brief. So what's going on with that situation? Like, how do I get it resolved if they tell you something that's not true? Then, like, how do I get my issue with this school district resolved? Because I feel like the council can help bridge the gap with school districts, and school districts need to be held accountable to the communities they serve. They are lying on parents and taking their fundamental rights away. So have you talked to them? Or was it a brief, or was it not a brief? That's, I'm still trying to figure that out.
I did speak to them, but I don't know, I didn't get any information on a brief. They didn't send me a brief. They didn't.
But they told you that because I never heard of a briefing until you said it. So then they told you it wasn't a brief. So they lying to you, elected official, like, so who do I go to for that kind of help with a school district?
I would, the school district said that you could have a hearing, that you should request a hearing.
Well, I did. And then their lawyer emailed me and said, "You can't contact them because we represent them." And I told you that too. So where do I go when I'm just a parent? I don't have a lawyer, and the school district took my fundamental right away, banned me from my child's school. Who do I go to? And they lied to all my elected officials. Where do I go? So I think you guys can help bridge the gap between failing school districts and the communities and have them held accountable.
Well, we, ma'am, we have no authority. It's a state, it's a state matter that you're dealing with here.
So who do I go to?
Well, number one, it's a school board that you, you have to go.
I can't go to them.
Well, then you have to go higher up to DESI.
Oh, yeah. And they said, well, they don't have power either.
Well, they do have power.
See, that's, that's the game. See, okay, the next thing.
Well, who's your state rep?
Rochelle.
Well, then you need to go to your state rep because it's a state action.
And they told her that I wasn't banned, and they told her it's a legal matter. Like, they telling everybody something different. I had the senator, the state rep, and the councilwoman to reach out to them, and they told them all three different scenarios. But before my 30 seconds is up, I would like to say, Mr. Stinger, the some county community engagement did reach out to me because I said something about streetlights. I live off of Chambers Road in unincorporated, unincorporated St. Louis County. We need streetlights. It's very dark. It's very dark. And we want streetlight right there between Chambers, between Hall Sperry and West Forest, and off Chambers by Green Valley, Balboa, Winkler, all them streets. We need, we need lights over there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Next speaker is Ralph Gerber.
Good evening. My name is Ralph Gerber. I live at 12958 Whipper Hill Lane. And I'm here to talk about my objections and concerns with a Pulte development that borders my property line. Recently, somebody was, without my permission, surveyed the whole side of my property, basing on my property. Nobody contacted me. And I'm sure that has something to do with this proposal. You know, I also can't, there's no overhead or anything, but I always talk, bring up about all the runoff issues I have currently. And this development would be right next to me, which will send more water onto me. And this new development that they have, the average lot size is actually smaller than it was before when they had more houses, which makes no sense to me. Seems like they're just trying to save more money by not developing as much. They're asking for all the, you know, setback adjustments so they can put more houses in a smaller footprint, which they have all that space that they could have utilized, and they're not doing that. There are several other things, but I've got like, I don't know, 28 pages here. I'll send that in. I sent it in today. I didn't know that there was anything going with this tonight, and I hurried up and came down. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ralph.
Next speaker is Ron Zitniak.
Name, Ron Zitniak, 12944 Meadow Hill Lane. It's in that Schussler corridor at the very end. And we talked about this last week. I'm going to reiterate some of the things that we said before, that this is a real bending of the zoning. You put that PEU on top of that R1 development. You're taking 21 acres and you're putting 21 houses on it. But these 21 houses are going to be clustered in the center of that property on one-third to one-half acre lots. And the rest of it's going to be whatever kind of green you want to put around there. What it's going to do is it's going to make that look like a hamlet from the medieval ages somewhere in Sherwood Forest. This isn't consistent with the neighborhood or with the community, which is required by the zoning practices. Everything in that corridor is one acre or larger, one house per. And if you want us to have a PEU, go look at some of the people that have these houses on full acres and on full three-acre lots and see what they do with it. You don't need the developer to sit there and try to put it together. Basically, it's an eyesore the way it's being done, and it's just not consistent with the way we do things or the way things are on that road. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Next speaker is David Skare.
Good evening. My name is David Skare. You've seen me here before. I moved to Schussler Road 26 years ago. I looked at probably 200 homes in St. Louis County before I bought on Schussler Road because of the nature of the neighborhood. I've raised several issues about safety, about traffic congestion, about environmental issues as far as cutting, grading, and blasting. I've raised issues about that it violates zoning ordinances. But tonight, I want to bring something to you that is out of the definition of a planned environmental unit. Okay? This is what they're bringing to us. They say they want, they want to make a planned environmental unit, okay? My issue tonight, in fact, there's two of them in here, and I could probably find more. Under, I have plenty of time, Section 10003187, Planned Environmental Unit Procedures, under number five procedures and under density calculations, and I quote, "Density is calculated by dividing the net area of the track by land by a minimum number of lot area per dwelling unit on the underlying zoning district. The net area is calculated by taking the gross area of a site and subtracting any land that is not reclaimed from the floodplain." There is floodplain there, and there is jurisdictional wetland also on this piece of ground, which is not being subtracted from this 21 acres, as far as my interpretation goes. There's probably two to three acres of that amount of land here, so this 21 acre should have a maximum 18 lots on it, according to this definition. It says, "The number of lots permitted shall be rounded down to the nearest whole number." Okay? That's in Section 5, under density calculations. In Section Number 7, Site Development, Concept Plan, and Section Plan, Number 2, under Planned Commission Review. The planning commission's approval or disapproval of the site, I quote, "Concept plan shall also be based upon whether the plant is consistent with good general planning practice, consistent with good site planning, can be constructed and operated in a manner that is not detrimental to the permit uses of the district, would be visually compatible with the uses of the surrounding area," visually compatible with the uses of the surrounding area, "and is deemed desirable to promote the general welfare of St. Louis County." Well, all I can say is, is that in 1903, the population of this county was almost nothing. In a little over 100 years, this county has blown up, and there's very little developed land anymore. And contractors are taking advantage of whatever they can get a hold of. You know that. I've got numbers for what Pulte's got, but I think I want to talk to you about that in private. This goes on and says, "The planning commission shall also consider architectural landscape and other relationships which may exist between the proposed development and the character of the surrounding neighborhood, and shall prescribe or require such physical treatment or other limitations as will," in its opinion, "enhance the neighborhood character."
That's the same as Mr. Chairman.
How does this enhance the character of the neighborhood? One other thing, if I just had a second, I'd like to turn in over 400 signatures against any rezoning on this ground.
Turn them into gen here, David.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jerry Linder.
I, Act 2, am here to speak to the proposed development off of Schussler Road. My name is Jerry Linder. I live at 12509 Arbor Knoll Place. I live in the Arbor, what's known as the Arbor Ridge subdivision. It's a new subdivision that was developed since 2007. It was developed in less than three years. All the homes there are million-dollar homes that sit on one-plus acre. My point here tonight is that we have vehemently opposed any construction where you would put homes on less than one acre. And that's exactly what Pulte plans to do. I think it sets a dangerous precedent. On Arbor Ridge, I bought there because of the openness, the nature, and the character of the area. I think if you start allowing one-third acre homes to be developed in that area, you're going to reduce the value of our homes where I live. It also sets a very dangerous precedent because if you, it's sort of like the beginning of one-third acre homes in that area. More and more might be developed. It sets a dangerous precedent. If you do that, the height, the road that goes down Schussler Road is so narrow it cannot accommodate additional traffic. I know you've heard that again, but you've got to see it to believe it. Telephone pole, there are no sidewalks. Telephone poles are as close as one foot from the road. It would be extremely expensive to widen that road. It would take out homes and fronts of yards. It needs to pretty much remain the same, and we need to maintain the integrity of the area and the character of the area, one acre or more. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Next speaker is Ann Zitniak.
Good evening. My name is Ann Zitniak. I live at 12944 Meadow Hill Lane, St. Louis 63128. I would like to discuss the Pulte again proposing the subdivision on Schussler Road. We are not against development. I want you all to know that. When we neighbors talk, it's not that we don't want someone to develop on that land. It's just that we would be thrilled to have one house on 15, wait, one house on one acre, 15 houses. That would work perfectly. And he could charge, Matt could charge the $1 million per house. So it's not like we're against that, but we don't want all those houses clustered in on this little country road where runners from the YMCA are going up and down all day long into the night, and employees from St. Anthony's Hospital use the road for various purposes. It's too crowded. It's dangerous. It's dangerous for the families that live there. And you've probably gotten to know some of us quite well, since this has been going on now once a year for the last three years. And like I said, please know that we neighbors, we're not against the development. We're just against what they're trying to do in changing the zoning. It's wrong for our area. It's wrong for our property. And we're the people that have to live with the results of what type of development is there. I've lived there since 1962, and I've seen a lot of changes, and they've been good changes. But you know, you know our area, but you don't know what the neighborhood's like. And there's a lot of special children that live in that neighborhood. There's a lot of animals that live in that neighborhood. There's still places that are zoned agriculture, and I'm one of them. And we have schoolchildren come for different teachings on different farm animals, and we do a lot of community service. And we don't want that messed up with all these homes and people coming in. It would not fit our area at all. So please know the development part, that's not a problem. It's just how many houses on the small acreage that we're having a hard problem with. And I was really disappointed, too. I'm almost done. Oh, and I still have time. But last April, we were told that the zoning was a done deal. They weren't going to change the zoning. And I thought, oh, thank you, God. You know, this is really wonderful. We've got some time to relax and enjoy our grandkids again and, you know, take care of the property that we live on. And then boom, here it comes again, you know? And they say it's not a change of zoning. It is a change in the zoning. It's not with, within what we're living now with the one house per one acre. We have more than three acres, and most of the... We have more than three acres, and most houses in that area have more than we do even. So please don't change our agricultural area into a big subdivision with a lot of houses. And like I said, develop it. That's great, but please do it within our zoning laws that have been in existence since the 1950s. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Ann.
Final speaker this evening is David Blackwood.
David Blackwood, 10,004 Schussler Road. I'd like to thank you guys for serving on the council. I know, sitting up here, listening to us, I'll complain, it's got to get tiresome, but Polte Homes is not conducive to what we have on Schussler Road. My problem with Polte Homes is they lie, they lie, they lie. You guys need to make sure you do all your fact-checking and make sure that they are presenting the facts as they are and not how they see them. We stood here, and they told us they could not afford to build less than 24 homes on that site. There is no way. We'll drop the proposal if we have to build anything less than 24 homes. Did they drop the proposal? No. They went underhanded and said, guess what? We're going to do a PEU and put 21 homes in. It's 21 acres. Great, that's wonderful, but the house sizes are 16,500 lot sizes, square-foot lots. That's not an acre. That is them manipulating the PEU to fit their needs, and I don't understand how they can afford to build 21 homes when they said they couldn't afford to do anything less than 24. So they're cutting corners somewhere. My other problem is blasting. There is bedrock there. They will blast, and then we'll have issues with foundations and water leakage and things like that from them, because from what I've seen, they will do whatever means necessary to save the dollar somewhere, and I think that will affect the whole subdivision, and the people that live in that subdivision will not have quality homes. You're going to have a $650,000 home with eight-foot setbacks. That's insane. Eight foot between, to the property line, so you have 16 foot in-between houses? When you're doing that, look up and down Kennelley Road. Those are multimillion-dollar homes. They say they can't afford it. I beg to differ. There's not one-acre lots available for people to buy. That's why we bought a home, tore it down, and built a new home. So I think if it's provided, people will come to it, but obviously, it's not my dollar being spent. So I would greatly appreciate you considering the facts and double-checking theirs. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
That's the last speaker, Mr. Chair.
Introduction to bills.
Bill number 278, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance approving and adapting the budget for the General Fund for fiscal year 2017, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the General Fund, the sum of $268,150,48 to be placed to the credit of respective departments, offices, boards, commissions, agencies, and funds of the St. Louis County Government as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2017. Bill number 279, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance approving and adapting the budget for the Special Road and Bridge Fund for fiscal year 2017, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Special Road and Bridge Fund, the sum of $23,571,48 to be placed to the credit of the county road system, to the credit of the Department of Transportation for general operations, and further appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Special Road and Bridge Fund, sum of $36,514,755 to be placed to the credit of the arterial road system, all as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2017. Bill number 280, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance approving and adapting the budget for the Health Fund for fiscal year 2017, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Health Fund, the sum of $57,446,744 to be placed to the credit of the Department of Public Health as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2017. Bill number 281, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance approving and adapting the budget for the Park Maintenance Fund for fiscal year 2017, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Park Maintenance Fund, the sum of $31,673,840 to be placed to the credit of the Department of Parks and Recreation as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2017. Bill number 282, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance approving and adapting the St. Louis County and Municipal Police Academy Fund Budget for fiscal year 2017, appropriating and setting apart the sum of $594,229 from the unappropriated balance of the St. Louis County and Municipal Police Academy Fund to be credited to the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2017. Bill number 283, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance approving and adapting the Assessment Fund Budget for fiscal year 2017, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Assessment Fund, the sum of $13,555,360 to be placed to the credit of the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2017. Bill number 284, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance approving and adapting the Sewer Lateral Fund Budget for fiscal year 2017, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Sewer Lateral Fund, the sum of $3,349 to be placed to the credit of the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2017. Bill number 285, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance approving and adapting the Lambert East Perimeter Tiff Fund Budget for fiscal year 2017, and appropriating and setting apart the sum of $3,352,279 from the unappropriated balance of the Lambert East Perimeter Tiff Fund to be credited to the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2017. Bill number 286, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance approving and adapting the Record Preservation Fund Budget for fiscal year 2017, appropriating and setting apart the sum of $789,433 from the unappropriated balance of the Record Preservation Fund to be credited to the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2017. Bill number 287, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance approving and adapting the Police Air Support Program Budget for fiscal year 2017, and appropriating and setting apart the sum of $250,000 from the unappropriated balance of the Police Air Support Program Fund to be credited to the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2017. Bill number 288, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance approving and adapting the Emergency Communications Fund Budget for fiscal year 2017, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Emergency Communications Fund, the sum of $15,984,794 to be credited to the account as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2017. Bill number 289, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance approving and adapting the budget for the County Sheriff Revolving Fund fiscal year 2017, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the County Sheriff Revolving Fund, the sum of $484,932 to be credited to the account as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2017. Bill number 290, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance approving and adapting the North Point Forest Subdivision Nid Fund Budget for fiscal year 2017, appropriating and setting apart the sum of $37,920 from the unappropriated balance of the North Point Forest Subdivision Nid Fund to be credited to the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2017. Bill number 291, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance approving and adapting the Residential Energy Loan Program Fund Budget for fiscal year 2017, appropriating and setting apart the sum of $1,106,360 from the unappropriated balance of the Residential Energy Loan Program Fund to be credited to the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2017. Bill number 292, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance approving and adapting the Children's Service Fund Budget for fiscal year 2017, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Children's Service Fund, the sum of $58,39,758 to be credited to the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2017. Bill number 293, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance approving and adapting the Cable TV Government Access Fund Budget for fiscal year 2017, appropriating and setting apart the sum of $40,000 from the unappropriated balance of the Cable TV Government Access Fund to be credited to the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2017. Bill number 294, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance approving and adapting the Convention and Recreation Trust Fund Budget for fiscal year 2017, appropriating and setting apart the sum of $10,265,363 from the unappropriated balance of the Convention and Recreation Trust Fund to be credited to the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2017. Bill number 295, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance approving and adapting the Water Service Line Fund Budget for fiscal year 2017, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Water Service Line Fund, the sum of $3,180,552 to be placed to the credit of the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2017. Thank you. Bill number 296, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance approving and adapting the Solid Waste Management Fund Budget for fiscal year 2017, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Solid Waste Management Fund, the sum of $1,702,000 to be credited to the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2017. Bill number 297, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Debt Service Fund, the sum of $7,729,257 for payment of interest fees and principal for maturity retirement of the public improvement bonds of St. Louis County, Missouri for the fiscal year 2017. Bill number 298, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance approving and adapting the Spirit of St. Louis Airport Enterprise Fund Budget for fiscal year 2017, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Spirit of St. Louis Airport Enterprise Fund, the sum of $22,37,300 to be placed to the credit of the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2017. Bill number 299, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance approving and adapting the Transportation Trust Fund Budget for fiscal year 2017, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Transportation Trust Fund, the sum of $12,000 to be credited to the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2017. Bill number 300, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance approving and adapting the Public Mass Transit Fund Budget for fiscal year 2017, appropriating and setting apart the sum of $45,67,300 from the unappropriated balance of the Public Mass Transit Fund to be credited to the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2017. Bill number 301, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance approving and adapting the Highway Capital Construction Program Budget for fiscal year 2017, in the amount of $27,469,900, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Transportation Highway Fund, the sum of $14,829,500, and further appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Federal Aid Overwind Trust Fund, the sum of $12,640,400 for support of the 2017 Capital Construction Program. Bill number 302, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance establishing tax rates to be levied on all real and tangible personal property in St. Louis County and on all other taxable property in St. Louis County for the General Fund, Special Road and Bridge Fund, Health Fund, Health Maintenance Fund, and the Debt Service Fund for the fiscal year 2017. The tax rates hereby established shall be permanent and shall continue in effect until superseded by a tax levy ordinance cast at such time as provided by law or reduced as necessary to comply with state law. Bill number 303, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance amending ordinance number 23,766 is amended by repealing and reenacting Sections 1 and 2 pertaining to a contract with the Economic Development Partnership for Provision of Insurance Coverage. Bill number 304, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with George L. Crawford and Associates, Incorporated, doing business as Crawford, Bunty, Brameyer, for engineering services related to the traffic study for the gravel road portion of the Great Streets Initiative CR-1697. Bill number 305, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to grant easement to Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District MSD for the installation and maintenance of a sanitary sewer line on a part of Susan County Park. Bill number 306, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance authorizing the chief of police to donate 50 obsolete Code III LED vehicle light bars to Missouri law enforcement agencies via the Missouri Police Chiefs Association. Bill number 307, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance finding that a certain area known as the Jamestown Mall Project area, more particularly described herein, is blighted and insanitary as defined in Section 99.320 of the Respite Statutes of Missouri, being Sections 99.300 to 99.660, inclusive, as amended, the LCRA law within the unincorporated area of St. Louis County, finding that the redevelopment of the area is necessary and in the public interest under the LCRA law, finding that said redevelopment of the area is in the interest of the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the people of the county, approving the blighting study and redevelopment plan for the Jamestown Mall Project Area prepared pursuant to Section 99.430, finding that there is a feasible financial plan for the development of the area, finding that the use of the power of eminent domain may be necessary to enable the area to be redeveloped in accordance with the plan, and that the plan affords maximum opportunity for development of the area by private enterprise, pledging cooperation of the county council, and requesting various officials, departments, boards, and agencies of the county to cooperate and to exercise their respective powers in a manner consistent with the plan. Bill number 308, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger, and ordinance authorizing and giving preliminary approval to a Planned Environment Unit Development of attractive land located in the R1 Residence District, subject to conditions PC 35-16, Polte Homes, St. Louis LLC. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Can you breathe, Larry? You good? Next week, we're reading these bills individually. Word for word, just so you know.
Whoa.
Maybe not. You ready, Jen?
Yes, I am, sir.
All right. Thank you. Perfection of bills.
Bill number 266, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd like to take it up, move for perfection of bill number 266. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, motion carries. Bill number 266 is perfected.
Bill number 267, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd like to take it up, move for perfection of bill number 267. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, motion carries. Bill number 267 is perfected.
Bill number 268, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd like to take it up, move for perfection of bill number 267. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, motion carries. Bill number 267 is perfected.
Bill number 268, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd like to take it up, move for perfection of bill number 268. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, motion carries. Bill number 268 is perfected.
Bill number 269, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd like to take it up, move for perfection of bill number 269. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, motion carries. Bill number 269 is perfected.
Bill number 270, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd like to take it up, move for perfection of bill number 270. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, motion carries. Bill number 270 is perfected.
Bill number 271, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Take it up, move for perfection of bill number 271. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, motion carries. Bill number 271 is perfected.
Bill number 272, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Take it up, move for perfection of bill number 272. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, motion carries. Bill number 272 is perfected.
Bill number 273, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara for Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number 273.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Ayes, ayes, motion carries. Bill number 273 is perfected.
Bill number 274, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd like to take it up, move for perfection of bill number 274. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, motion carries. Bill number 274 is perfected.
Bill number 275, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move to perfect bill number 275. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, motion carries. Bill number 275 is perfected.
Bill number 276, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move to perfect bill number 276. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, motion carries. Bill number 276 is perfected.
Bill number 277, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger. Hold on the order of business, please.
Show order. Final passage of bills.
Bill number 116, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold bill number 116.
Show order.
Bill number 257, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd like to take it up, move for final pass of bill number 257. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Katie?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 257, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 258, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara. I'd like to take it up, move for final pass of bill number 258. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 258, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 258 is finally passed.
Bill number 259, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd like to take it up, move for final pass of bill number 259. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number 259, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 259 is finally passed.
Bill Number 260, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill Number 260.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number 260, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 260 is finally passed.
Bill Number 261, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd take it up, move for final passage of Bill Number 261.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?[1647.63]